I'm going to walk you through the information. We're not asking you to make any decisions today. We think it's important for you to have an opportunity to digest the information, especially since we just gave it to you last evening. The council also has a closed session on Thursday to talk about labor negotiations that, and one of the key issues you'll be discussing there is the discussions with the SEIU about a possible furlough, which is one of the key elements in our balancing strategy for the budget. And I think, I hope today what you'll be able to do is get good information, be able to kind of kick the tires a little more. So when next Tuesday we come back to you with some of the key policy issues, you'll have all the information you need to make the decisions. The booklet we've given you has four categories, and our intent today is to really go over three of those, not the fourth. And the first is revenue cost shifting options. These are issues that have come up about possible new revenues or shifting costs from one part of the organization to another. The second section are, the council's had a number of questions about some of the program cuts and the impacts of those cuts and what it would cost, in some cases, to restore services. And then the third category is funding options. Basically, we've identified through, because of, through the council discussions and also independently, if the council wanted to look at, for example, to try and avoid layoffs as a part of your negotiations or restore some of the service cuts, options that are available to the council. One thing I want to say before I turn it over to Bob to start through this is, I think the council needs to also put the entire situation into perspective, and that is, we have about a $10.5 million problem. And we, the proposed budget right now includes about $2.5 million of one-time solutions. And I think it's important that you need to keep this in mind, that we're still not out of the woods. And if the council does choose to restore programs, that's great. Just remember that we're still going to have to make additional efforts during the next year, even if the economy does pretty well. And if the economy continues to erode, the situation could continue to deteriorate. And I think it's important that, although you may be eager to, oh, let's restore this, restore that, keep in the back of your mind that we're still not out of the woods. And that's a concern we have. And as much as I think we all, I mean, these are very difficult choices. We don't take pleasure in recommending the budget we presented to you, but we also have to recognize we've got to be fiscally responsible and look to the future. And if we use all of our one-time solutions now, we hurt our options for the future. So I just kind of that caution. And with that, we'll kind of, we'll go to the first area, which is the revenue cost shifting options. And we're going to basically just walk through these A, B, C, and D, and then go into the program cuts. If I receive any speaker slips, I will bring them to you when that subject comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. Bob Pearson, finance director. He's going to make some opening remarks in addition to Jim's, and then we will have representatives from each of the relevant departments presenting to you information on each of these items. As Jim mentioned, we'll start with the revenue cost shift options. And the first of those on your list, 1A, is the utilization of Measure G utility tax funds. And I'm going to leave the bulk of this discussion to Public Works to talk about the, what we would be looking at if that were to be something council wanted to pursue in terms of the specific impacts on programs and activities and projects. But just to say that, as you know, Measure G represents the utility users' tax approved, revamp of the utility users' tax on two of our utilities, specifically telephone and video cable TV that was approved by the voters in November of '08. And it was approved as a general tax, and traditionally, that general tax has been split 50-50 between the Streets Fund and the General Fund. And that is the way it is in the recommended budget. But it was identified that as now a general tax, council does retain the discretion to use those funds in any lawful manner they see fit. And so that is really why we're able to talk about this as a funding option for the General Fund at this time. And that's really the only background I wanted to give on that. And then I would, I'm going to turn it over to Public Works to talk about the specifics that are identified in the issue paper that you have in your packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As we went through the review of the capital program with a goal of trying to identify projects that were funded under the Measure G funding category that could be delayed or handled differently, we came up with a list of a million dollars' worth of projects. And they're in your packet, identified as delays in some instances, potentially alternative funding sources to be evaluated. But I'll walk through them quickly. The delay of the GOLIDA Transportation Improvement Plan contribution of $366,000 is part of an MOU that we have, is an agreement with GOLIDA. We don't anticipate that that will be needed in the coming year. There's no expectation that that project will be moving forward. So the obligation, I think, is something that we need to recognize when the need arises, that it's part of a longstanding relationship that we've had with GOLIDA. But for the short term, we don't see this as being an impact that will be significant. Delaying the Cabrillo-Anacapa intersection improvements, that's one of the improvements that will go along to improve the area when the Cabrillo Bridge construction takes place. There's also a possibility that that would be a candidate for RDA funding. As you know, the RDA funds are going to be short-term and phasing out in the next few years. There'll be a lot of competition for the projects that will be able to be funded with remaining RDA dollars. This would be an eligible project, but we don't necessarily have any guarantee that it could be funded through those funds. But we'll be looking at that as the review of RDA projects is evaluated. The SR225 relinquishment, based on the discussions that we've had and presentations to city council over the last few months, the timing on this relinquishment is not a good time in terms of dealing with the state. So we know that this is probably going to be delayed for at least another year. So we have a small amount of funding remaining in this line item to be able to continue to have discussions and to be able to support dialogue with the state, but not to do a full commitment of the transition over the coming year. And that doesn't seem to be a significant impact. The school zone safety program, we're targeting for a reduction of $100,000, based on the fact that we have ongoing projects and some carryover funding to complete projects in the coming year that we feel will be sufficient to support the ongoing work in this program area. So it's important, but we feel that there are going to be activities that will continue to move this program area along. Reducing the Lower Mission Creek funding by 50,000. We will retain approximately 50,000 in that line item to continue work on that longstanding and ongoing program. So this will be a reduced level of effect, but we anticipate we'll be picking that up over the coming years. The bridge preventative maintenance program, we're also targeting for a reduction of 50,000. Once again, we will retain funding in that line item to enable us to continue to work on those programs to the tune of $50,000. But it will reduce our ability to continue to move ahead as aggressively on some of those bridge replacement needs. And the Chapala-Yananaali Bridge program, we are proposing a 50,000 reduction for the 2010 budget. Once again, that's a project that will continue to be needed, and it will be a reduced level of effort, anticipating that we'll be pushing that out a bit. And finally, the Sycamore Creek improvements, we had approximately, well, we're proposing a reduction of 160,000. We'll continue to have about 350,000 left to continue to work in that program area. So what we've, what we've tried to do in identifying candidates for this particular request is projects that we believe are not going to, going to be impacted if we delay them, or programs that we feel we have an ability to continue to support with a level of funding that will keep us working through the coming year, but we will not be moving quite as aggressively or be able to reach completion on some of those projects. And that was the strategy that we, that we incorporated.
You have a question? Okay, Mr. Francisco, I didn't see any lights, but go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Concerning the, the bridge preventive maintenance, my question is, it's a pretty simple one. I know there's always a trade-off with preventive maintenance over, you know, you cut back too much and you incur increased costs down the road. And so I just wanted to get a little bit more detail on, on what the effects of deferring $50,000 worth of maintenance on that particular program would be.
It's the, it's the program that focuses on deferred, on a bridge replacement and maintenance needs. We were fortunate in being able to get continuation of funding from the state for, for some of our bridge replacement programs that had been stalled for a bit. So that's helping us in this area. But I'm going to ask Pat to come up and provide some more specific information about the type of projects that may be affected.
Madam Mayor and council member Francisco, this is a new capital program that we've placed in the budget just recently, in the last few years. And so we're very confident that we will have sufficient funds to do the immediate needs that we have to accomplish your concerns. And then plus, as Chris had noted, that we have a significant capital program that was recently approved by the state to replace some bridges that now no longer are in the deferred maintenance category. We can now just simply replace them as part of capital improvement, which will significantly reduce the need for future maintenance.
I see. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Mr. Williams, Ms. Schneider, and Mr. Horton.
So with these two, the reduction of the bridge prevent, preventative maintenance and the reduction of the Chapala-Yananaali Bridge and the Sycamore Creek, well, those two bridges, those two bridge items, will those delay a bridge project?
Madam Mayor and council member Williams, is that, no. These are funded for, would be sufficient funding for staff to manage these projects for several years. This was an opportunity to put it in the budget. And so reducing the Chapala-Yananaali Bridge, which is a seismic replacement project, by the way, which was just recently funded, again, for a capital replacement, this is sufficient funds for us to provide the city match for the next year. So we do not believe that that's going to affect the ability to deliver.
Can you give me more?
All the reductions, the last four reductions are not going to affect the ability to deliver these capital projects.
And can you give me an idea of what exactly the school zone safety money would be used for?
That has traditionally been used for a series of projects. Many times would include bulb outs, sometimes sidewalk replacements, signage, a whole package of, of potential capital improvements. And the reduction is based on that there's sufficient carryover, I believe it's $275,000.
That's correct.
Such that that's a sufficient carryover to still be able to deliver that program without adding any more funds.
If that money was left in there, would you be able to get more areas done and therefore improve the safety for more kids? Or would you just not be able to get it done?
We believe that, I'd rather approach that in a different question.
You can wait to answer that if you want, but, but.
We made this recommendation based on the ability to, that with the $275,000 we have, we can provide a significant increase of funding to achieve the goals of that program.
But I think you're right.
That wasn't really an answer, Pat.
Yeah. I think the, the issue is that we will be able to, we, we will have to reduce the level of effort in that program, based on what we were proposing to achieve over the coming year. So we, as I said, when we put together the request to, response to the request to look at a reduction of a million dollars in the Streets Capital Program with the potential of using those funds in, in other ways. It, in some cases, I think we came up with a couple of, of examples of areas that we know we're not going to have to use this year. So that's not an immediate impact. They will be projects or programs that we will have a liability or commitment that will need to be met in future years, like the, the transfer of 225 and the GOLIDA project and those kinds of, of funding needs. In the other program areas, we are, chose areas that we believe we can continue a level of effort that will be responsive, but it will be a reduced level of effort than what we had hoped and anticipated we would be able to accomplish in the proposed budget for 2010. So yes, it would mean a lessening of the ability to do programs affecting school safety. We have that balancing act of, of not cutting it completely and knowing that we will have projects in that category that will move forward, but with a reduced level of effort.
And the Cabrillo-Anacapa intersection improvements, those are also safety improvement?
As we said, those were part of the whole project related to the Cabrillo Bridge replacement and the need for some modification for that intersection, going along with those, those bridge replacement impacts. So that will be a continuing need. The timing is, is in part linked to the other project. But oftentimes in the capital program, as I'm sure you've noted, we are either accumulating funds that will allow us in the foreseeable future to be able to accomplish a project that we don't have all the funding in place at, at the particular year, or where we recognize it's potentially difficult to have a large amount of funds in one single year made available for a project to allow the planning and the design work to continue with some certainty that we'll be able to afford the project when it's ready to be put under construction. So that's what we're looking at here, is some of the impacts of programs that we were accumulating some funds and doing the preliminary work in anticipation of a capital construction in the near term within our six-year capital improvement program. But for the immediate year, we feel we can make adjustments that will not stop the project or drastically impact our ability to deliver that, that project when it's going to be needed.
So you're saying that the delay that would be created could be a couple months as opposed to a year?
No, I think we're looking at, in many instances, a full year.
Okay.
But still within that planning horizon that we're trying to use for capital projects. Browning may want to add to the, Mr. Allen?
On the intersection improvement project, you know, a couple things. You know, we, there will be enough money left in the account where we can do the conceptual design of the project, so we can go through the review process with the advisory boards. But with the delay in the reconstruction of the Cabrillo Boulevard Bridge, which is probably going to be at least a year, we'll be looking at this time next year, coming with the funding to do that project. So we feel okay with taking the money out from that project during the next fiscal year. But in, for fiscal year 2011, we're going to have to find the funding to actually do the bridge replacement, if the state of California releases the money for the bridge replacement project. But we want to do the bridge first and do the intersection improvements, because the space that we might take up for any potential safety improvements for the intersection, we don't want to do until the bridge work is done, you know, just for access for the bridge project.
And I'll take the opportunity also to make a plug for Mr. Kelly, because Mr. Kelly and Tom Conti went trouncing around creeks with, yesterday, and under bridges with me yesterday to kind of identify some places that had stored up amounts of trash and debris and was a real concern for the folks down in the, you know, De La Vina area. So I just want to say that your staff is very responsive to requests to go looking under bridges.
That's good. If I could just do a quick follow-up to this school safety zone, or school zone safety project, is that connected with the Safe Route to School? Do we leverage that money in matching or anything like that?
Well, we did apply for Safe Route to School grant this current fiscal year, and we would use the money that we have available currently budgeted for matching funds for their grant. We always, you know, that is one of the primary sources we look for, for matching funds for our grants. You know, if we're successfully getting a grant, then I sit down with Pat Kelly and John Owazak, and we see where we can find the matching funds. But that is a primary source for our matching funds.
If we had 100,000 more, we could leverage more? Is that true, or?
Not, yes and no. It's really depending upon how well our projects compete, you know, when we submit for either a federal or state Safe Route to School grant. So hopefully, we're successfully getting the grant, and we won't have to use as much money that we have set aside, you know, for one of the projects we're looking at over by Luccumbera Junior High School. You know, if we don't get the grant, then most of the money that we have set aside will go towards that, that project. We've applied for it twice, haven't been successful, because it's a very competitive process, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Schneider?
I think you answered most of my questions. This one you may not be able to answer, which is about the Cabrillo State Bridge replacement, and how secure is that state funding really coming to the city? Because it's already been accepted and then taken back once. Because that then relates to the decision we need to make on the intersection improvement.
I guess, you know, I'll take a stab at it. We, we know that we need to keep a real diligent eye on the state funding, even after it's indicated that we have support and it's, it's been approved, because the state doesn't know, in many instances, from day to day, what their funding situation looks like. That's been our experience, at least, in, in trying to get good information from Caltrans. And I think they're giving us their best understanding of what their funding situation is, and sometimes it changes for them. With the communication we've had to date, with our understanding of what their understanding of their funding situation looks like, we're moving ahead with the expectation that those funds will be available when the project is able to be put under construction. So as we said, the timing is such that this, this intersection project will follow that, and, and we want to keep them in sync, and we want to keep them moving along so that one is ready to go right after the other is completed. But in the next year, we don't anticipate that that's going to create a specific problem.
Okay, that makes sense. And the 225 relinquishment, we know for sure right now that it's going to be delayed a year.
Correct.
Okay, which is a different scenario than the bridge. The school safety zone, is there a particular project, school area, right now in mind that is under review? Because the, all the other ones, it's very specific, the intersection, the bridge, but this one, you know, there's a lot of schools, so.
This is a program category that we try to allocate funding to be able to do as an ongoing basis.
No, I understand that, but what's next in the queue, I guess?
As Browning mentioned, I think the next one is a Luccumbera Middle School project that we've been working on for the last couple of years at least. And as we've said, there are programs that we try to use this money as leverage to be able to, to achieve some additional dollars through state and federal funds. But we need to also continue to move forward on projects that are in the queue for implementation. And that's the choice that we kind of make as we look at the success rate we're having with the, with applications and when we need to just move forward. So there are projects that we have developed in a queue, but the, the next one, I believe, would be the Luccumbera.
Next one is the, one, the, on MODOC and put a swallow by Luccumbera Junior High School. But the other money that we have available, there's things come up around the school. A good example is on Garden Street, over near Constance, we put a speed radar sign-up. We use this fund, you know, to pay for that, you know, with the school, speed limit being 25 miles around the school. You know, we did the two flashing beacons on Cota Street over by Santa Barbara Junior High School. That's what the money's were available, used for that as well. So as we move through the next fiscal year, if new requests come in from some of the other schools that we need to actually go out and purchase equipment, we might not have the money available towards the end of the next fiscal year to do that. We'll have to defer it for another year. But some of the smaller improvements, whether it be striping or signage, you know, that type of improvement, we'll still be able to accomplish with the money we have available, as well as, you know, have it out of the streets maintenance program, because basically we're doing striping, it's just paint and staff time.
Okay, so it's important to recognize, even though this piece of paper says delete school zone safety, we're not deleting school zone safety. We're deleting, well, the recommendation is $100,000, because there's other money available to do other things during the year.
Right.
I think that's an important distinction.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Horton?
As you might guess, a related question. I was just wondering if any of the projects that would be deleted were ones where the parents or schools had asked for specific help, and we said it would be coming in '08, '09, and then now it won't be?
No, there aren't any projects that would be funded out of next year's funds that have been requested by any, either a principal or one of the parent groups.
Ms. Hakoni? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Turned it off. Thank you. So I guess we're ready for the next one. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is cost savings and impact of the proposed changes to the alternative transportation programs and shifting state street maintenance to the downtown parking budget. And I'll just read the statement of the issue, which is, what are the cost savings and impact of shifting 50% of the costs of the downtown organization's state street maintenance to the downtown parking fund? What are the impacts of the proposed changes to the alternative transportation My Ride Bus Pass program funded through streets and downtown parking?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, on, on this particular item, you know, we currently have placed in the proposed budget for FY10, $200,000 of, out of the downtown parking program to support the contract for the maintenance of the sidewalks and landscaping on State Street and some of the adjoining streets in the downtown, as the contract the city has with the downtown organization. We've also put an additional $20,000 in next year's budget as matching funds with the downtown organization for a pilot program for security in the downtown, whether that be with a private company or retired police officer. The details still need to be worked out. I guess the request is, what would be the impact in the downtown parking program if we actually took 50% of the cost of the contract with the DO and paid for that out of the downtown parking program? That would be an additional 110, 112,621 for next fiscal year. I've sat down with staff, we've looked at the, our budget projection for next year. Taking on that additional cost would result in a projected budget shortfall for fiscal year 2010 of $76,385,000. So we would be in the red next fiscal year. You know, our concern that, you know, our revenues have not met projection for a few years, so, you know, we're delicately balanced. So, you know, I think that is probably a, a good number. We are looking at our, our budget. You know, we've made some adjustments with the monthly parking. You know, hopefully, we will be out okay next fiscal year, but our projection is a $76,000 shortfall for next fiscal year. One of the things that we have done to address the budget shortfall, you know, with the first $200,000 and the $20,000 for the DO contract, is just doing that alone, we would be in deficit spending for next fiscal year. We were recommending the elimination of the 90-day My Ride Bus Pass program for non-city employees who work in the downtown. You know, it's a program that was implemented a few years ago. And when we went to the enhanced transit, we started the 90-day bus pass program instead of the unlimited bus pass program. And we basically charge for one month the service, and we give those employees two months for free. In order to fund the additional costs, you know, we recommended the elimination of My Ride Bus Pass program for non-city employees, and would phase that in over the next year. Basically, December 31st of this current calendar year would be the end date for that program. With the additional cost increases for the, potentially with the $112,000, you know, our recommendation, in order to support that, we would suggest that we eliminate the My Bus Pass program for non-city employees effective with the beginning of the new fiscal year. Basically, how we would accomplish that is we would not issue any more bus passes after July 1. That doesn't affect city employees, it's non-city employees. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
We would also, though, still continue to sell MTD bus passes at a discounted rate that, just basically the same rate that MTD has, because there's already a pretty big discount on their bus, bus passes.
Yeah, well, basically, we'll sell them at face value, with the, either 30-day or the 10-day, 10-ride bus pass, sell them at face value.
Okay, any questions on this? Mr. House?
This proposal that, this proposal we have here is in addition to the $200,000, $220,000 that was originally proposed to us. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, the additional $112,000 in addition to the show, correct.
And the, would you just review for us briefly the impact on the, on the enterprise fund of the $220,000 recommended hit?
Without eliminating the My Ride Bus Pass program, we would have Without eliminating the My Ride Bus Pass program, we would have a projected shortfall for next fiscal year in the neighborhood of $36,000. So by eliminating the My Ride Bus Pass program, we'll actually have a surplus, you know, for next fiscal year. You know, so, you know, we have to make some adjustments, and the only program that we really have in our downtown parking program where we can make adjustments to offset the needed costs without having to dip into our reserve fund is the My Ride Bus Pass program. We don't think we can make change.
Okay, and then when we did the adjustment to the parking rates, part of the intention was to create a sinking fund or reserve account against future maintenance of the parking lots. How are we planning to make that up, or what's the plan for that?
Well, in 2006, when the new rates went into effect, we went from $1 to $1.50. You know, we had one need to just make our operating budget of $1.3 million, and the Downtown Parking Committee recommended to council, we raise an additional $500,000 to put into a capital reserve fund. Unfortunately, the new rates went into effect right around the time when the economy started hiccuping. We saw Copeland's go out of business, we lost Acapulco Restaurant, the thrift store, Alpha Thrift, went out, and Victoria Court closed down. So we, of the additional half a million dollars, our first year, we raised $250,000, then $250,000, and then now we're not even raising that, and we're actually below our $1.3 million projected increase of revenue for the current fiscal year. So, you know, the economy has taken a toll on the downtown parking program in terms of raising the money that we thought we were going to raise in '05.
So when, so I guess my question goes a little bit further out into the future, Mr. Allen. That is, let's say, economy begins to rebound in a couple of years, and things start coming back. Given the current rates that we have, and this, the proposed program, and I'm not talking about the 112 additional, but just the 220,000, do you see us having the ability to begin to replenish those reserves that are intended to meet the future maintenance needs of the parking lot, or does that $220,000 wipe that out too?
Well, I would estimate that $220,000 will possibly, you know, probably take a portion of the additional half a million dollars that we're trying to raise, to go in the capital reserve fund. But, you know, it's kind of a guessing game right now. We need to see how the economy goes, and like, our parking rates track similar to how our sales tax, you know, are going. So as we see our sales tax going, we should start seeing our parking rates increase too. So, you know, we will want to, you know, see if a couple of years of a good economy, to see how our revenues are going. You know, one thing that we talked about at the Parking Committee, they feel strongly that now is not the time to look at doing any type of rate adjustment for the hourly rates, especially when we're not even making a revenue projection for the last couple of years.
So, last question. These are not one-time adjustments. These are, if you will, structural or permanent adjustments, not permanent, like, we could change it at some point, but these are not just for one time?
Well, that's going to be a decision on the council. The Parking Committee requested that these be a one-time adjustment, or a loan from the parking program to the general fund, but it's going to really be, you know, your decision, the council.
Thank you.
Schneider?
How many people participate in the My Ride program beyond, outside of city employees?
It's right around 100, 120 regular users of non-city employees.
Okay, thank you.
Falcone?
So I understand the numbers correctly here. The shifts that are being proposed to the downtown parking program, when all the math is done, still results in a deficit of $76,000 year-over-year? Is that...
That's correct.
And your suggestion of phasing out the 90-day My Ride Bus Pass program will net $60,000, leaving a remaining deficit of $16,000 approximately, year-over-year, though?
Right.
So that's not a sustainable solution?
It's only a one-time fix. We're going to have to look at some other adjustments for the next fiscal year.
And what are you recommending to plug that almost $20,000 hole in the downtown parking?
Well, we, we...
You say that they're going to use reserves, but that's not a sustainable solution either.
That's not something we would like to do, is use reserve funds to pay the operating expenses on an ongoing basis. You know, some of the things that we have been talking to Downtown Parking Committee, some minor adjustments into the parking and business improvement area, you know, like with the banks and the movie theaters, you know, we move forward with that, that would bridge the gap.
Explain that a little bit more. I get a little more detailed with that. I don't know what that means.
Well, the Downtown Parking Committee for a couple of years have been looking at the various categories in the PBIA, the Parking Business Improvement Area, to see what adjustments we can make, see if they were all equitable. And so we've looked at several categories. We hired Penfle Smith to do an analysis of our structure, and some of the areas where we think we can make some minor adjustments.
That you gave us a little while ago, that proposed parking and business improvement area assessment changes?
Yeah, was that the one I met, when I met with you, Councilmember Falcone, and I believe it was Councilmember House, and...
Modification to theaters rates?
Right.
Da-da-da-da, yeah.
That's the one we're talking about. So it's movie theaters, minor adjustment, you know, the banks, currently the banks are paying based on the amount that they have on deposit as of January 1, making that by square footage. Fitness haven't, creating a fitness category, and they would pay based on gross sales versus square footage. So minor adjustments. Overall, we anticipated to the PBA, another $50,000, $60,000. So that would put us back in the, into the black if we were to do that. And we anticipate working with the Parking Committee during the summer months, do some public outreach, and hopefully be back before council, either in October or at mid-year, to make that adjustment to the parking program budget. And that would get us balanced for the next fiscal year, you know, 2010 as well as 2011. You know, and hopefully after that, we start seeing some pickup in the economy, and we'll continue to work on seeing other areas where we can make some adjustments. But obviously, we have to take a close look at our, look at our capital improvement program, and some of the projects that we have identified, we'll just have to push out to future years, as we have a major effort for the 2010 fiscal year. We're projecting spending $1.4 million of our above council policy reserve, and that's going to leave us right around $1.2, $1.3 million of reserve that's above council policy. And I don't feel comfortable dipping into that. We're already paying for our maintenance out of that pot of money, so that's going to continue to complete that. So we're going to have to take a really close look at how we operate the, our parking program in the next couple of years.
Thank you, and I assume Mr. Rouse is going to speak here in a moment, and maybe he'd give us a clue as to whether or not you think any of this is a good idea. Well, I know your answer, but no. Now, whether or not some of these changes into the future might be useful. Thank you.
Mr. Williams? And then Mr. Rouse?
I would just, you know, indicate that one of the reasons why looking at this and some of the other things that seem smaller is important, and perhaps more vital than looking at the cost shifts of capital programs, is because it's not, it, the cost shift of capital programs is one time. And so we're going to be back here next year trying to figure out the same juggling act, whereas part or all of this could be structural if we chose to make it that way. I also think that there is some logic in, even if we try to make somehow the downtown parking whole or close to whole after this, that there's some logic in having a direct fiscal relationship between the DO contract and the downtown parking, because there is a shared constituency for both organizations, and therefore, there is an incentive to keep the prices reasonable by having our DO contract paid by Parks, which has a very different constituency. There is not the same kind of incentive. So I think there is a very, there's a logic to this, even if we try to figure out some ways to make them whole or close to whole. I don't think that the ending the My Ride program six months early is the greatest way of making them whole. I think it's a relatively minor amount of funds, and I think we should consider giving them enough, you know, $60,000 or $70,000 of RDA funds to keep them in the black. That's a totally permissible and aboveboard and, you know, a use of RDA funds, we have done so in the past. It's a use of RDA funds I haven't been a big fan of in the past, but I think we all kind of need to make some sacrifices this year to get it done. So I would, I would just put that out there as a alternate way to keep them in the black, is make a transfer of $70,000 of RDA funds as we, as we make this program shift.
Okay, Mr. Rouse? I have one request to speak.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, member of the council, Browning actually kind of stole my thunder, so most of my notes are now, have already been, already been given out. One of the parts that we didn't talk about, though, was our outgoing maintenance obligations in the out-years. We currently have close to, I believe, $3 million over mandated reserves earmarked towards these maintenance projects. We have identified almost $10 million in ongoing maintenance that's needed to be done to these lots, some of which are matters of public safety, and this is done over a 10-year period. So we have projected in our last fee resolution to be able to backfill into some of those funds and to help us with that maintenance. As you know, we're a self-contained enterprise fund. This proposal puts us squarely in the red in operations, so now we're looking at going into reserves for operations. That's neither the intent nor the expectation of the merchants and the general parking public. Every time, and I've been with this system as a member off and on since '92, and each and every time we've raised fees, we've seen an immediate drop in parking customers, which relates, of course, to retail customers and sales tax revenue, jobs, and so on. This is a particularly difficult time, and I don't think there's any business would go, geez, you know, it's kind of slow, let's raise prices. I don't think that's exactly where we'd go with that. So I would, I would recommend that we look elsewhere than trying to come into the enterprise funds with this kind of funding. I understand there are programs and jobs at risk. All of us in the private sector are certainly doing the same kind of decision-making gyrations every day. So I would hope that, and I say, Mr. Allen pretty much covered all the nuts and bolts of the situation. So as representative of the Parking Committee, I'd like to say that we would not support the proposed taking of these funds, or diverting of these funds to other ancillary projects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams, you have something further? Okay, Ms. Falcone?
A question of history, and I'm not sure, scanning the room, except maybe Joan, who would really have this history under their belt. And it had to do with the decision to make the state street redevelopment a function of Parks. It's, the maintenance on State Street is actually under the auspices of Parks. Maybe Nancy knows more about this. And that, I think, is how it ended up as a general fund obligation. The nexus between the parking lots and why they exist, which is to support the state street commercial zone, wasn't made at the time, that I understand. So this would be a structural change in that way, because the general fund pays the DO to maintain the contract that cleans the street. But I think it's done under the auspices of the Parks Department. And people don't understand that, don't know that. So I'm wondering if a little bit of history as to why State Street was put under Parks as opposed to under streets would be useful to know, in terms of if we're going to make a programmatic change or a structural change. There's a lot of structural changes being tossed about and proposed for the Parks and Recreation Department. A lot of the stuff that we're considering actually goes back to how do we save Parks and Rec? So Nancy, maybe you could illuminate me and maybe others.
Mayor Bloom and Councilmember Falcone, I have to admit it, to not knowing fully the history of that. However, it would be my best guess that, because this has been the discussion that comes about with other maintenance contracts, that the Parks Department, that's our business in terms of landscape maintenance. We, because of the street, the trees on State Street, we're already involved in the maintenance of State Street to that degree. And because State Street has always been looked at a little differently in terms of a plaza, pedestrian walkway, parkways, much more in that realm, that has, that would be my guess of how the contract came to live with the Parks Division.
That was the intent in the redevelopment of Paseo Nuevo, to make it from the beach to the shopping district, sort of more like a park feel. That's my understanding from Dave Davis from back when. Mr. Armstrong?
Yeah, just from a management standpoint, I think, I think Nancy's correct. I mean, even if it were entirely funded by another source, I think we would still want the Parks people who have the expertise in landscaping and irrigation and horticulture to manage the contract with the DO, because they have the expertise. Even if the funding changed, that's probably the most appropriate place to just actually manage that contract, because, you know, Santos walks the plaza once a month with representatives of the DO, and they have a checklist of contract compliance. We treat this just like a landscape contract with an outside vendor, and it's important to continue to use that expertise, even if we fund it a different way.
But then we get back to the bugaboo, my bugaboo, of using enterprise zone money to pay a general fund function, which I still have a problem with, although I recognize it may be perfectly legal.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Mr. House.
Mr. Armstrong, let's just address that point, because that keeps coming up. I want to really understand it well. I know, because I'm on the Airport Commission, I'm the liaison to the Airport Commission, that we have contracts at the airport with the city for different things. I mean, there's, and so that's part of what we see in our budget as the allocated, am I right? Allocated costs shows up on each of the different departments where they're doing something for someone else, and it goes, enterprise funds have that relationship with the general fund as a matter of course. Am I misunderstanding something here?
That's correct. Their departments provide services back and forth with each other and charge, and it's a normal way of doing business. We charge enterprises, and we try and be very, very careful, not only to follow the law, but also what we believe is the intent of the law in all of the departments, to make sure we're not getting to the gray area. And we wouldn't propose any of these cost shifts, so we didn't think it was pretty clear. I think the downtown parking is actually a little unusual, because in many, it's an enterprise operation because we created it that way. You could actually, there are cities that have downtown, you know, parking operations that are part of their general fund. So it's, it's actually, there's a little more gray there than, for example, the waterfront or the airport, where there's outside legal requirements, such as the FAA rules or the Thailand Trust rules, whereas the downtown parking is a little grayer, like the golf courses also. In some cases, cities have golf courses in their general fund.
I see. Got it. Okay, but it's nothing, so that's helpful. I'm not advocating for this change or anything. I just want to be sure that it's a matter of normal course of the way we operate the business in the city of Santa Barbara.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I just, I just really want to speak on this, just in that, because it is ongoing, and it's one of the few items on this list that has a significant amount of funds that is ongoing, we have the opportunity to save laid-off positions, save public safety positions, save youth programs by doing thing that's, something that is perfectly legal, and maybe even more logical than having Parks be the one paying for this DO contract. However, I agree that we have a responsibility, the business owners, to continue to get projects and maintenance done. But because that's a capital need, we can, I believe, keep them in the black with RDA funds, and it's just a lot less painful than all the other things that we're talking about on this, on this budget items.
I, and I'm hoping that we'll agree to do it, because I think it can make a big difference for youth programs and public safety.
Thank you. Next.
Madam Mayor, just a caution, and that is, you might want to try and limit the discussion to questions, and then have this debate next week, because we've got a long ways to go and...
I was just thinking that, thank you.
Sorry, just a caution. I'm trying to be mindful of your time, because I know you have a long day today.
Yeah, I don't think we, this isn't a debate time, or telling us how you feel about everything. I know you have finance meetings and so on. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next issue is the issue of shifting beach maintenance to the Measure B Fund, and the statement of the issue is, can the cost of beach maintenance be shifted from the general fund to the Measure B Fund creeks program?
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Jill Zachary of Parks and Recreation Department, in your packet you have the estimated... in your packet you have the estimated savings the general fund would be two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. The Parks Division currently provides beach maintenance activities, which includes grooming and raking, um, also handpicking of litter. We are involved in, um, animals that need to be dealt with on the beach, a whole variety of activities. If this cost shift was pursued, it would represent ten percent of the projected revenue for Measure B in fiscal year 2010. Um, we've not yet determined what the impact to Creeks Division operating and capital programs are. However, we did, um, discuss this with the Creeks Advisory Committee at their regular meeting, and then also the Park and Recreation Commission when they had their budget hearing. In your packet, it indicates that there is not support from the Creeks Advisory Committee. Uh, the Park and Recreation Commission also concurred that they did not support, um, that type of cost shift, primarily because it, it would represent a policy change that they determined would need, uh, a lot further discussion. Uh, when Measure B was put to the voters in two thousand, the city promised that we would not use the funds to supplant existing general fund programs. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. No, go ahead to the next one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next one is, um, the delay of fiscal year 2010.
Question Jill.
General fund capital projects, and the statement of issue there is, which capital projects funded by the general fund could be delayed by up to one year due to the uncertain economy?
And I'll take this one, and I may need some help from Public Works, but I think it's pretty simple. Um, first, our general fund capital, we originally had planned to have a million eight in the budget, and as a part of balancing, we reduced it by, um, almost eight-hundred thousand dollars. So the, the general fund capital has already been reduced pretty dramatically. And as you know, from the Infrastructure Financing Task Force, really, the general fund capital is probably way underfunded from where it should be. Um, but the issue did come up, especially in the Finance Committee, could we, one, eliminate further, or the other was also just to delay some projects with the idea that if the, if the overall economy continues to deteriorate, this was a place to have some, um, additional, um, reserves that might be available to help us from dipping into reserves. And we've identified three projects that would be in that category, and the, the three projects are, first, uh, we have a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars scheduled to do city sustainability projects, energy conservation, um, in addition, but we also, as you know, have received, um, where we'll receive over eight-hundred thousand dollars from the federal stimulus package. Um, so we're very rich now in doing projects here, and so we think that that's one that could be delayed or eliminated. Likewise, on ADA improvements, we had a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, again, um, kind of a, uh, an amount, we had originally had two-fifty, but because of the federal stimulus package, we're going to be doing a number of right-of-way type improvements, access ramps, um, way in excess of this. Now, this was primarily going to go to facilities, but in talking with Kristi Schmidt, who works with the Access Committee, she, she felt that the Access Committee is very pleased with what we're planning to do next year, and that if we deleted this for, on a one-to-year basis or delayed, it, it wouldn't be an issue for them. So that's why we included that. And lastly, in talking with Parks and Recreation One, and I think this is probably, um, a reluctant recommendation, that they thought we could delay, um, the Playground Replacement Program. This is an ongoing program. We have already made reductions in this area. Um, we have not recommended some additional parks projects, um, for a variety of reasons, but one is that part of what we're doing in the parks area is we capitalize and employ there. So if we eliminated those other projects, we have an employee who is a project, um, somebody who works on project coordination, who, part of the way that position is funded is through this capital program. So if, the idea was, you're trying to save jobs by eliminating some of the capital, in effect, it would affect that employee, and we've already made a reduction there already. So, and, and, and the projects there are fairly critical projects, so we wouldn't recommend you go further. So those are the three projects we would recommend, if you want to either delay or eliminate some general fund capital.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Please have a comment.
Okay, quickly.
Yeah, I asked for that. I think it's, uh, it's responsive, and this is an area that you can, uh, affect, this kind of a savings, and, um, it really doesn't, um, hurt the, the greater operating fund. So that, that's the information I needed. Thank you.
Library, next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next category is program cuts and impacts, and, um, the first item within this category is keeping the library open on Mondays, and, and the statement of the issue is, what would it cost to keep the Central and East Side libraries open on Mondays? And I will turn it over to Irene Masias.
Morning, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Um, responding to the question that you had about keeping libraries open on Mondays, um, and wanted to talk a little bit, uh, first about the impact. The library has been open seven days a week for over thirty years, um, and I expect that the initial impact would be some unhappiness, um, with the reduced access to materials and, uh, to other services provided by the library. We also believe that, um, many customers will adjust to the new schedule and would likely move their usage of the library into one of the other six days that the library is open. Um, and here we have, uh, the cost for restoring Monday service, uh, just under a hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand. Um, that would involve bringing, uh, restoring, uh, or retaining three of the positions that have currently been proposed for elimination, and that's two library assistant ones and one library assistant two, for a total staffing cost of a hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Excuse me. And then, um, some associated costs with keeping the building open, uh, would be eleven, just over eleven thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, I, I did want to say that this, the schedule for closing on Mondays does include using two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand of library gift monies. So, um, even if that, this reduced schedule, we're, um, living beyond our, our revenues.
Okay. Ms. Schneider, quickly.
Thank you. To be clear, the money, the dollar amount up there is not for three people just to work on Mondays, it's their restoring their full-time position, be Monday through Friday, or, right? I mean, it's not, I mean, in order to open things on Monday, you need more staff, so you would just restore the positions, but those positions will be working...
Right.
...beyond Monday.
Right, they will just be restored.
The way that looks, it sounds like it costs two-hundred-thousand dollars for three people to work one day, and that's not what you're saying?
No. It's, um, in order for, right, to be open seven days a week as we currently are.
So, obviously, then, these three positions will be doing other things on other days. So does that mean that there are other services and programs throughout the rest of the week that, uh, the library will be continued, be able to continue that in the current recommended budget is being cut?
We would, there is a huge amount of work that goes into, um, managing the collections and, um, bringing back these positions would mostly go to that, um, from check, uh, from checking books in, putting them back, uh, not putting them on the shelves, but, um, the processing of books, uh, pulling books to send to other libraries, unpacking them when they arrive from other libraries. Um, and we, um, we also didn't make much of a reduction to the hourly hours, as you recall. So being open on, um, being open the seven days, uh, would allow us potentially to reduce some of the hourly hours when we bring back the full-time people.
Okay. So this total amount not only keeps the library open on Mondays, but it also reduce, it also, um, brings back the level of service that, in your presentation several weeks ago, you said would be reduced. For example, restoring, you know, doing the background work throughout the week, because I remember a delay in receiving interlibrary books and, um, getting the books back on the shelf after someone's returned them, and, you know, there were a whole bunch of other impacts that the elimination of these positions, um, reflected, and so those things will now come back. So it's in addition to opening it on Mondays.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
These are filled positions right now?
They are filled posi, oh, actually, no. Um, the, yes, I'm sorry. They are filled positions. One of the staff members, the library assistant two, is, um, planning on relocating around, um, the end of the, of this month.
Would it be possible to, to run Monday service with two library assistant ones?
Um, the, the library assistant two position, uh, is, um, oversees some activities of the circulation desk. And, and what I wanted to say was, if we're open all day on Monday, then there's a lot of, a lot of activities that take place relating to the movement of books, relating to questions being asked, relating to dealing with people's accounts. So, um, the level, to be at that same level of activity, we need those three positions, and, of course, they would be there, um, the entire week. Um, and one of the, one of the, I, I believe the question you're asking relates to, so you're asking whether only having library assistant ones would, would...
Right. I mean, I guess my, kind of, some of my logic is based on this. If, if things are closed on Monday, we might have less things checked out. Of course, we all, might also just have more books piling up in the, um, in the drop-off things, uh, on Monday, and then they're going to still have to be processed, uh, on, just on Tuesday.
Correct.
Uh, so would it be a problem, then, instead, to actually have it open and just still have some of the processing done by the library assistant two on Tuesday? Since that's what we would be doing anyway, if we closed?
To have the library assistant two?
If, if you're saying the reason why we would need to have a library assistant two is because they're involved in some of the circulation responsibilities, and, isn't that what we would be doing anyway on Tuesday?
I'm going to ask Myra Nicholas, that, Myra Nicholas is the manager for Public Services, and I think she can respond.
And then maybe while, while she's answering that, you could give me an estimate of how much hourly hour funds this would save, because that way we can actually look at this in terms of how much money we would really be spending extra, because it doesn't seem to me like we would really actually be spending a hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand extra, because we would have savings from the hourlies, so.
Nicholas?
Mayor and Councilmember Williams, Myra Nicholas from the Library Department. The, the, I know this is kind of a difficult concept, but really, the issue is, currently, we're open seven days a week. Six of those days, we take our staff and have part of them work Monday through Friday, and part of the full-time staff work Tuesday through Saturday. When we consolidate staffing Tuesday through Saturday, we can eliminate some of the full-time positions, because we then have shifted that workload into a shorter work week, and we can accommodate that with fewer bodies. Um, the Monday opening, it's not just the, like, the two library assistants who could run the library on Monday, it's all those people who work full-time, who are then spread again over the six days. So there is a certain amount of, of hourly time that you recoup, but the full-time people are, are necessary to be spread over those, if, if you retain the full-time hours, to be spread over those full six, um, full days. Does that make any sense?
It does. But I guess I'm going to ask the question a little bit different. Would you be able to manage and get through, you know, what, fifty-two Mondays in a, in a year, whatever, um, with two library assistant ones there? Instead of a libraries, and, and not have a library assistant two? Would you be, you be able to have that operation work functional?
No.
No?
We need all of those, all of those bodies in or, in order to make that function for those six full open days.
Okay, all right.
Here's the problem. We have nine more topics. We love talking about libraries, but we have nine more topics, and this is our fifth one. So we, and, and we have a Finance Committee meeting at noon, so how do you want me to proceed here, folks? Do you want me to start to allow any...
Time us.
No, I'm not going to time you and yell at you. Maybe you can, um, maybe we should just hold all comments to the end, and you can always email these, folks, this is for our information. I really want to get through all nine topics.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, to my colleagues, uh, we are getting way into the weeds, in my opinion. And certainly, if we're going to get into the weeds, that's, if they can, they can do it if they want to. I don't think it's a good idea, but I think it should be done next week.
Are you saying weeds, not weeks?
Weeds.
Okay.
In other words, we're getting into details, which are really best allowed up to the managers of the departments involved.
And we can talk to them and ask our individual questions. Okay. So let's try to get through these, the nine, and then see what, if I'm counting right, let's see, you know, if we have any time left, that would be good. Mr. Pearson?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item on the list is additional reductions to the Employee Development Program beyond the reductions proposed already in the recommended 2010 budget, and for that...
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, good morning. I will be as quick as possible with my presentation. I do want to introduce some folks that, uh, make part of the team in employee development. Barbara Barker, who is a Human Resources Manager and Training resides in Human Resources. Graciela Reynoso, who is behind me, she's a training analyst, and she's responsible for tuition reimbursement for the City Leadership Academy, for employee orientations, which is a, a big part also of the training program, as well as for LEAP training. And last but not least is Diane Hollins, who is the Dean of Economic Development. Uh, she is, uh, the City College is the principal LEAP training provider for us. Is an excellent partner, and she's here with us. Uh, she's a key contact on the LEAP training program, and she might give you, if time allows, she might give you just a few comments about our relationship with the City College. A council has a copy of, uh, the issue paper as well as the LEAP training report, so I'm not going to go into detail in those areas, but I will quickly go over some of the key aspects, I think, of the training program. I do want to cover a few of the issues that relate to what the programs are all about, and I'll do, do this in a very quick summary. The tuition reimbursement program, to begin with, it is exactly that. It's reimbursement to employees for training that they receive in particular areas. It could be a certificate program, it could be specialized training, or undergraduate or graduate degrees. Uh, we have an average of fifty employees per year participating in this program. Uh, each receive approximately six-hundred dollars per, per individual. The numbers vary, but the average is, is six-hundred dollars per individual. Next is the City Leadership Academy. You know it as CLA. This is a voluntary, uh, two-year program. It is a comprehensive management program. Uh, we have about twenty-five employees per academy. Uh, the academy, the way we have it laid out, we have one or two courses per month that, uh, individuals attend. It also involves outside training, and then at the end, uh, we call for the, a group for a team of the individuals to put together a report on a specific, uh, uh, group project. As an example, we have five teams working on, on five projects. One on the, uh, City Business Continuity Plan, another one is on enhancing the city neighborhood relationship, another one is on the Redevelopment Agency Next Steps After Expiration. That's an example of the projects that the teams are expected to put together with a value to us at the end of, of the course. Moving right along then to our, our third and the largest program, you know it as LEAP, and that's the acronym for Learning for Excellence and Achievement Program. It's a program designed to improve skills in many areas. One of them is to improve customer skills, which is a principal, uh, responsibility for all city municipal employees, to be more effective, to be more efficient. It is part of our big picture on employee retention and building the internal talent. It is not easy to attract people to come to the city of Santa Barbara from other areas. So organizations often rely on building from within to increase the talent pool within the organization. We do have a, a couple of requirements, uh, for attendance. For non-safety personnel, employees need to attend sixteen hours per year. For safety personnel, it's eight hours per year. And we have approximately a hundred-and-twelve, uh, classes per year. Moving right along to the budget discussion, where we are in two oh nine, where we're proposing in reductions, what we're proposing for 2010, and what is the percentage of reduction. You can see from this chart that, uh, we are looking about a sixty-three percent reduction overall in the training. Uh, forty-five thousand we budgeted in, uh, in two oh nine for tuition reimbursement. Uh, we're, uh, proposing a reduction of approximately twenty-three thousand dollars, leaving us about twenty-two thousand dollars for 2010, a fifty-two percent... a 52% program reduction. For CLA, for trainer, trainer and supplies, these two categories, CLA and LEAP, they focus on trainers and supplies, not on the staff, which is covered at the bottom of the sheet. We budgeted in 2009 about $36,000 for trainers and supplies. We're proposing a reduction of $33,000, leaving us only about $3,000. That's a nominal amount, but I think that's an amount that we need for some of the supplies and some of the incidentals. We are proposing a dramatic shift in the way we deliver this training program. That's why I think we can do it cheaper. One way of doing it is with more in-house training and less contracted training. So, doing it that way, I think we can accomplish the CLA program. And lastly, is the LEAP program, which currently, we have $41,000 budgeted. We're proposing to reduce about $21,000, leaving us with a program of half, about $20,000, which is approximately a 51% reduction. We do have two staff persons assigned to this. There's 1.5 FTE. One is a full-time analyst, and the other one is a half-time person, and you can see the amount of money that we have for each of the positions. We are not proposing reductions in those two areas, and we are proposing, one of the things, when we shift from the CLA training program, from a trainer contracted program to an in-house operated program, it is gonna be much more labor-intensive. So, we foresee, still have a need for staff, but you'll see later on in my recommendation some of the options that we have for reductions. In terms of summary of the key issues, tuition reimbursement reduced by 52%, which means we'll have 50 fewer employees participating in 2010. We had an average of about 50 employees with the reduced money. It'll be about 25 if the monies remain. For the City Leadership Academy, a 92% budget reduction, again shifting from contracted to in-house trainers, much more labor-intensive, and the nominal amount, if it is eliminated, would have to be absorbed through any remaining funds. And lastly, the LEAP program, 51% reduction. In 2009, we had 112 classes. We reduce funding, we probably have around 50, maybe 60 classes at best, supplementing it with in-house instructors. We would, if we had to discontinue the funding in its entirety, that would mean the loss of approximately 112 classes when compared to 2009. That would be for 705 employees. Some of the gains that are made as a result of this program could be lost. I mean, they won't be lost overnight, but part of the skills that we get in managing is reinforcing and refreshing some of the principles of management and supervision. So, some of the gains that we've made in being more effective supervisors, in having better employee performance evaluations, in more customer service, in planning, organizing, implementing, and monitoring overall activities of an organization, there could be, we could compromise and reduce some of the efficiencies in those areas. This would, again, would not happen over time. And another significant impact is the City College staff could also be laid off, or they would have reduced hours, because we are the City College's biggest customer, and we enjoy a very good working relationship with them. It's very cost-effective training. It's about $300 per class. We have about 20 employees per class. With that, it's about $15 per employee attending these courses, so it's a very cost-effective training. And lastly, a key thing, by shifting the way we propose, even without additional reductions in our budget, we are proposing to suspend administratively the 16 and the eight-hour training requirement for non-safety and safety personnel. So, that's, that's already part of our proposal, because we can't maintain the volume and still have that requirement. Lastly, if it is necessary to make more reductions, here's some areas that council could consider. One, we could reduce tuition reimbursement and eliminate the funding, which is nearly $22,000. What that would do, it would reduce opportunities for employees to have their tuition reimbursed, but this is the program that has the least amount of employees and the highest per capita cost, if you look at the overall program. We could absorb the reduced CLA funding if we do maintain the LEAP training as program as proposed. So, we could absorb through CLA the addition of $3,000. And lastly, before we get into any further program reductions, if necessary, we would propose that you consider eliminating the LEAP part-time position, saving approximately $43,000. Of course, I am aware of council's interest in trying not to impact staff. We could avoid that layoff if the funding is retained, and the staff that's currently involved in those activities could be shifted to assist us in other areas. Lastly, if I may, with the council's indulgence, I would like to add Diane, Dean Holmes, if she would not mind coming up and just giving you a real quick overview of our relationship with the City College. I think it would be important for you.
Sure, come on up. Yeah. Hi.
Hi. Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes to address you. Marcelo summed it up pretty well, giving you all the facts and figures. I did a little research before coming today, and we've been the principal training partner for the LEAP program for the city since 2004, since its inception, and since that time, the college has delivered 366 credit classes to your employees of the city. And the aggregate enrollment of employees in those 366 classes has been 5,265. So, it's been a very successful program. What I wanted to share with you today, in addition to Marcelo's comments about the value of training, especially in a city like Santa Barbara, which is an expensive place to come to, even though housing costs are falling, still expensive. We do training all over town, and for large employers principally, and have noticed that across the board, the issue is growing your own and training your own people to come up within the organization for succession planning and so on. So, a program like this is very beneficial in that regard. One of the things that we have noticed with our instructors, we evaluate every single class that's taught. So, we look at those evaluations very carefully. And one of the things that has been happening, and it does take time for this to happen, is a cultural shift. Marcelo touched on this a few minutes ago. There has been a cultural shift among city employees from the benefit of going to these classes, and principally in two areas. One is the value of interacting with employees across the board, across the organization. In a training class, you're able to do that in a very effective way. And the other thing is that part of each and every class is an action plan or learning objectives. So, the participants learn about the topic at hand, but they also, as part of the course, are tasked with coming up with three learning objectives that they want to take back and apply on the job, and they complete an action plan along those lines. So, it's very relevant to what they're doing. It isn't just that they're going to class and taking time to hear about a nice topic, they're actually charged with coming back and applying it. So, in that way, the employees have reported much greater productivity from having the LEAP training program. So, I wanted to say a word in closing, just about the effect of professional development and training on the motivation and productivity of employees. You know, there's much research that shows that recognizing employees is very motivational for them, and this LEAP program has been very good about recognizing employees that complete the, the certain portion, the success series. There have been recognition, certificates of recognition given out by Mr. Armstrong, and those recognition events are also attended by our college president and executive vice president. So, I just wanna echo Marcelo's comments about not taking away the gains that have already been made. So, on behalf of the college, we compliment the city council and thank you for creating a proactive program like this, and we are thrilled to be a partner with the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your help.
And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Okay, next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next topic is general fund contributions to the vehicle replacement program, and the statement of the issue is, what would be the impact of reducing the general fund contributions to the vehicle replacement fund by $300,000 in fiscal year 2010? And I just wanna give you a brief background, that when we made the switch a number of years ago, from a pay-as-you-go vehicle replacement program for the general fund to a pre-funding program, one of the things that we did not do was, we did not address our unfunded liability. That is, vehicles that might already be five years old and are gonna be replaced in five years, we did not accumulate those five years of funds that should have already been in the bank. And one of the ways that we had intended to address that unfunded liability was by stretching out the vehicle replacement schedule. And we have done that, as you'll see in a moment, in a number of cases. And so, there is an impact in terms of reducing the vehicle replacement contributions, in terms of our goal of achieving the funding of our existing unfunded liability for our fleet replacement. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Anderson.
Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. You've had quite a bit of information on the vehicle replacement program. We provided a memo and spreadsheets that articulated the specific consideration of the vehicles that were being proposed for replacement in 2010, so I'm not gonna belabor that. As Mr. Pearson pointed out, this program is designed so that departments that use fleet equipment and vehicles pay two rate components. They pay an operating rate and a vehicle replacement rate. The operating rate covers the cost for the year's use of that vehicle, the fuel and the maintenance, the preventative maintenance programs, and then there's a contribution to the replacement of that vehicle based on an expected useful life. And that's the balancing act, in terms of trying to determine what's appropriate to be paid in to create the sinking fund that allows us to replace vehicles when their useful life is met. And by that, I mean, the point at which the cost for maintenance and the ongoing repairs and reliability of the vehicles to support the operating needs for that department are compromised to a point where it's less expensive to use the opportunity to replace and renew the use of that vehicle need, as opposed to retaining it as an asset and continuing to have higher maintenance and reliability concerns. So, in looking at the effect, or the option, of a one-time reduction for the general fund contributions to the tune of $300,000 into that replacement for a vehicle account, I think we feel that it's something that we can manage with the realization that we've had a building program, that we're not at the point where everything has been fully supported up till now, and this would be a slight deviation. We're still building the program to the point where we actually can be assured that we can fully fund a replacement of the vehicles, especially the higher-cost vehicles, and most of the public safety fire equipment, for example, has a very high price tag, and it tends to grow rather than diminish over time. The needs for additional equipment and capacity for those vehicles is something that we also are looking at. It's not always possible to do a cross-the-board, straight replacement. Sometimes, the enhancements are necessary to meet current needs. So, we have submitted a recommendation on how this would be handled. It would involve reducing the contributions by general fund departments for those general fund vehicles, reflects about a third of the annual general fund replacement cost per year. The way we would intend to manage this would be by not necessarily extending all of the life cycles for those vehicles, but we would look at, as we have demonstrated in the previous information provided, we would look at each vehicle and assess whether it could be extended and still meet the efficiency and cost-effective goals of maintaining the fleet, and look for opportunities to continue to extend that useful life as much as possible, and that's the way we would handle it. And I feel confident that we have a very capable staff managing this program that has demonstrated a real ability to be able to make those choices and plan appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, do you have a question? Okay, thank you. No, that's good. Thanks.
I'm not violating the rules. I just had my light on still.
It's okay. Thank you. Okay, graffiti.
The next one is eliminating graffiti cleanup on private property. What is the impact of eliminating graffiti cleanup on private property and the cost to restore the private property?
Yes. And thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This is a public works program. It's handled by our street maintenance folks. It is a program that allows us to support the cost of going onto private property in those rare instances when the private property owner is not able to, or is non-responsive in addressing private property graffiti problems. I have to say that by and large, we have a positive response from the public. I think they're, in general, good managers of their own property, and this is not an area where we're heavily funded, because in general, even if we have to notify a property owner that there's a problem that they haven't already recognized, the response is generally good. The code allows us to go through a process where we can compel a private property owner to clean up graffiti on their property, or get a repayment of the costs associated with that improvement, if the city needs to step in and accomplish it based on the code. It takes several steps for us to be able to go through that process, to be able to recover the cost of the graffiti abatement on private property, and there's a timeline associated with a notice that's required. So, that's the concern, I think, that's been expressed in general by the public, is in some cases, the length of time it takes for that abatement to occur is not considered really acceptable. But it's not the largest problem, I think, that we're grappling with in terms of graffiti abatement. This is the funding that we've identified to kind of help in those really difficult situations, to have a little bit of resource that allows us to be able to address things by using our own staff. So, that's, in essence, what the program is. Our proposal, we felt was responsive to the task at hand of trying to reduce our general fund costs, but also recognizing that it's an area where we feel we've got good response from the public in general, and when necessary, we do have a code that allows us to go through a process that does not require out-of-pocket city funds to be able to cover it.
Thank you very much. Teen programs. Thank you.
The next category, Madam Mayor, members of council, is Neighborhood and Outreach Services and Proposed Changes to Teen Programs. The issue statement is, what specific program changes are proposed to teen programs as part of the Neighborhood and Outreach Services?
Hannah.
Good morning, Mayor Bloom and councilmembers. Here to present some of the impacts, the positive, and some of the reductions that are gonna be taking place with the combination of community service and teen programs. Is someone gonna click that? Thank you. To begin with, from fiscal year 2010, is actually 11% decrease in funding for the combination of these two budgets together, and the majority of the budget reductions are taken in the community services budget areas, the elimination of an admin assistant, the closure of the Lower West Side Center, and then the other three areas, hourly salaries, supplies, and allocated costs are split between the two budgets. In the packet that you have today, I put together a table of some of the broad-stroke areas of community services and teen programs. I did this in order for us to better understand what will be continuing, what may be modified or reduced, and what will be new, with a little bit of explanation. And I wanted to explain that the table, you move across in the table, so that the X in that area relates to that line. To begin with, one of the proposed changes, and this was a budget reduction and also an impact to staff workload, was that the youth council meetings be reduced to once a month from two times per month. This is about a 15 hours, additional hours per month, that a permanent staff has to work on the Brown Act meeting and grouping, getting this group together. So, that was one of the budget impacts and changes that we're proposing. The closure of the teen center on Saturdays, and also that we would propose fewer dances, teen excursions, and some teen concerts. Also, some of the modified things are moving the sponsorship of the Leadership Banquet to fundraising and donors, which was, actually partially took place this year. We had a really good sponsorship this year. One of the modified areas is the bringing more collaborative teen programming into the community centers and expanding what we do... the community centers and expanding what we do at the teen center to Franklin and West Side Center. And then another very important opportunity is to look at and have a more effective structure for the advisory committees and improve the voice of residents in the political process and let youth council and advisory committees work more closely together. So those are the bulk of the program changes and that are either modified or reduced. I want to move on to some of the new opportunities, and this is the most exciting part of the combining of these two programs, is that we will be using and maximizing our resources in the underserved neighborhoods. And some of the ways that we are going to be doing this is the having better youth representation in the underserved and identified neighborhoods, expanding our leadership programs out to Franklin and the West Side Center, linking through the Santa Barbara Teen Coalition, many of the teens-serving agencies, linking them more closely with the South Coast Gang Task Force and Solutions for At-Risk Youth, doing a better job of doing outreach and promotion to the underserved neighborhoods and focusing on that, adding teen drop-in programming at the community centers, adding transportation to teens. It's often an obstacle for teens to get to programs or move between neighborhoods safely. And so if you were on the east side and you wanted to go to the teen center for a special event or a function, perhaps add some transportation to that. And also to really focus on youth employment. One of the things that has been said over and over again by families and teens themselves is that they need more employment. Many of the, as you saw, the programs are continuing, the activities of the youth council, the teen center in and of itself, and the programs that are provided there, the leadership activities, the teen coalition. The marketing identity of teens will remain. They will, in itself, be an entity within Neighborhood and Outreach Services. Focus again on jobs network and all the community social services that take place, and currently the mural restoration program and the Santa Barbara Arts Alliance programs that are both teen programs at community centers right now. So those will all be continuing and expanding. We did have the opportunity to meet with the youth council last night, and I wanted to touch on some of their comments. Commissioners Longstreet Burns and Connor were also able to attend. We had about a two-hour meeting. And as you might understand, they had a lot of concerns. This is, you know, new to them. It's a new concept, and it's been a vision of the city, I think, for many years. But they, of course, are not as savvy in budgets and how budgets are put together. So there was a lot of comments and concerns. But we took, spent a lot of time discussing them. Some of those comments will stand and come forward. They were not ready to compile their comments at that time and bring them to council, so we offered them the opportunity to email us comments, and we will put those together and bring them back to council or forward them to you so you were able to see what the teens are saying. I would imagine, since school will be out, they might attend next on the ninth, which would be good. And we do appreciate their insight. They were very articulate, and really, they did speak for a wide range of teens within the community. One of the main concerns was just the concept of how will it work? And as we can see a vision and know that it'll come together, it was, it's kind of intended almost that it's not set in stone right now and that we take some time to phase in and listen to citizens, advisory committees, youth council, to determine what direction we should be going and to craft the priorities of the focus of Neighborhood and Outreach Services. But they did say that they are concerned that by having teen programs in several different areas of the community, that it may fragment teen programs, and that they were very proud of the overarching community building that youth council has put together. And that is acknowledged, that they do represent teens from throughout Galita to Carpinteria. So that is acknowledged and an important aspect. One thing that is noted in the youth council is it does bring teens together from many different schools, from all over. It's about 20 members strong. But in looking at the demographics and where the folks live that serve on teen council right now, out of the 20 members, two live in 93101, three live in 93105, two live in 93109. 93103 is unrepresented, and so then the other 13 folks live outside the city limits. And so, especially with the emerging west downtown concerns and other concerns throughout the community, we do feel that there can be some greater connection from teens in the otherserved neighborhoods with our youth council and with the correspondent advisory committees in that area. But they do have a very strong youth base, and we are very proud of where they are today. But as in everything, there can be some improvements. Another concern was that the teen programs would lose its identity and be swallowed up by Neighborhood and Outreach Services. And we did assure them that there would still be their own website, their own brand, their own program guide page, and actually, we would be able to add some things to what teen programs offers. So if you go to the teen programs website, there will be a link to what's happening with youth jobs within the city, and that's not taking place right now. So we did assure them that they are going to keep their own identity, and it was a very important thing for them. They've worked very hard to be teen programs for the city, and they want to maintain that. Of course, a couple of the budget reductions that we had proposed were concerns of theirs. The youth council reduction to once per week. And given that we are going to be going into a new phase, a new vision in the concepts, and what they have to say is going to be very important, we may not be able to reduce that to once a month right now. And the youth council members did offer to help to reduce the staff time and be, you know, part of the process to keep on task and help perhaps reduce the staff time with minutes and agendas and so forth. Of course, the other concern was the reduction in programs. And this, you know, it's part of budget reductions. We are taking reductions to programs across the board for the department. And the proposals that we have put forward for teen programs are really the most costly programs relative to the number of teens served. And so, you know, we felt it is important to redirect some of those funds out into the neighborhoods and reach teens that we aren't reaching at this time. One other note, it's proposed to reduce the dances from 10 to 3. Well, part of that is that the Correa Recreation Center is going to be closed for renovation for a year, so we won't have access to the ballroom. But we do acknowledge that those dances are important because they bring teens from all areas of the city together, and that's one of the good ways that we do this overarching bringing youth together, an important aspect for youth council. We wanted to assure them along the way, and we did at the meeting last night, that they are part of this process. This is just the beginning of the process, and we're going to be having several meetings as we move forward to include voice from advisory committees, youth council, commission, citizens. And that they would be very involved with any changes that we would make to their membership, the structure of their advisory committee, their meeting frequencies. We want the youth voice. We want them to participate, and we're making changes to improve the youth voice, not take it away. And we also wanted to assure them that we need their participation to talk with us about outreach to youth, to strategize different ways to bring programs to youth, and to bring the east, west, north, south all together. So overall, it was a very positive meeting. There was a lot of learning that took place. There was a lot of information shared. But I think, as you can see, the new opportunities far outweigh some of the reductions, and it's an important shift for us to move to neighborhoods and serve some of the teens and youth in those neighborhoods that are not being currently served. So that's my, I didn't, tried to get it in quick, so.
Did fine, thanks.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions that someone may have, even though you have a rule of Ben's.
It's okay, it's okay. We're just trying to get. That's proposed.
This is proposed.
Yeah, that's a proposed.
That's the proposed organizational chart.
The proposed organizational chart.
Yes.
Because it's not the current.
Good for having that. Yeah.
And I will say, there are two positions that are not on here, a grounds maintenance worker and also an office specialist.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Los Baños.
Madam Mayor, maybe on the next three items, because I think the reports are relatively clear, that we can just ask if there's questions on them. I think that then you can go to animal control restructuring if there aren't. But first on Los Baños, are there any questions?
Baños, and then the tree maintenance reductions. Mr. Williams, do you have a question?
Just the Los Baños question is, one of the things that came up was the idea of people that are invested in the Sunday lap swim raising funds to complement.
Yeah, it's on the sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right there. Friends of Los Baños.
So this is, the 4,000 figure, 4,400 is our share of what would be the match or something?
This is the cost to reinstate the Sunday service.
Okay.
And just to, the Friends of Los Baños have committed to fundraising for both reinstating the Sunday lap swim, but more importantly, because as they listened to the whole budget presentation, they realized the impact of losing the Ortega Park rec swim. And so they have committed to fundraising the 8,600 to restore that program, which serves underprivileged youth.
Good. Thank you. And tree maintenance reductions? We can read this through. It is pretty straightforward, though. And the third one is the zoo contract. Mr. Block was here yesterday.
Madam Mayor, I just.
Yes, go ahead.
Acknowledge and thank the zoo for initiating discussions because this is a long-term issue, and it's glad to see that they're coming forward.
Yeah. And it, yeah.
And you didn't hear a word I said, because my mic wasn't on, but thank you to the zoo.
Thank you. Okay. Then we, and there's a letter, too, from the zoo there. Okay. So the next one is the animal control restructuring.
And as Deputy Chief Mannix is coming up, I've also asked the staff to move the Finance Committee to 12:30.
Mm-hmm.
I think that'll be sufficient time so that you, and then we were not planning, just so it's clear, to make presentations on the other issues items. We thought those are pretty clear.
Okay, good. Well, and I didn't quite understand, I have to tell you about the, you're going to explain it to me, the restructuring of the animal control, eliminating position, but you're not really somebody who's going to retire and all that sort of thing. So maybe you can just, I'm sure you can make it very clear.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of council, good morning. We are proposing a restructuring of the animal control unit in fiscal year 10. If we divert our attention to the slide here, we see that our current structure under fiscal year nine represents one animal control supervisor and three animal control officers. So we have one supervisor and three officers. The proposed structure, which would take effect April of 2010, would be to essentially lose the animal control supervisor position but retain three animal control officers, one being designated as a lead officer position. The three officers currently represent 120 hours of field enforcement a week. The proposed structure would field 100 hours of field enforcement a week, or a reduction of 17 percent. However, the general fund would realize a $96,000 a year savings, yearly savings, with this proposed structure. This would represent a reduction of about 32 percent for the salary and benefits unit, salary and benefits for that unit. So in other words, a 32 percent reduction in salary and benefits would cost only a 17 percent reduction in field enforcement. So another way of looking at this is we would have approximately 2.5 animal control officers conducting field enforcement compared to our current three officers. So the question might be, well, what happened to that half officer? That's because half of that officer, who is still an employee, would be doing administrative work currently assigned and occupied by the field, or by the animal control supervisor. So about half of his time would be on the administrative work. The other half of the time, he would be in the field, conducting field enforcement. Some of the true supervisory responsibilities of the animal control unit would befall the administrative services sergeant. So that sergeant would encumber the responsibilities for employee evaluations, budgeting, scheduling, P3 reporting, and things of that nature, minor disciplinary issues. But the administrative duties that require the animal control expertise would befall the newly created lead officer position. So I believe the important thing to remember is that the proposed structure would be saving the general fund $96,000 a year in savings, but it would only reduce field enforcement by one-half of an employee or 17 percent overall.
But they're still answerable to a supervisor that's in existence in the department, like the lead is still answerable to someone for accountability.
Yes, that's correct. Another way of looking at this is we presently have an animal control supervisor who reports to a police lieutenant. So we have a sworn person overseeing the unit in its entirety via the supervisor. Under the proposed structure, we would have three officers being accountable to a sergeant. So a similar type structure, it's just downgraded a little bit.
That, I really appreciate that. I was getting all mixed up, and I'm not anymore. So thank you. Mr. Francisco. And Mr. Schneider, then. Go ahead.
Deputy Chief Mannix, the current animal control supervisor position, is there a lot of slack time in that job?
I can't say there's a lot of slack time. We provide a high level of service, which goes well and beyond past what is mandated by law. Some of those considerations might have to be reduced. For example, we handle about 1.5 calls for service a day, which are mandated by law. Those things would be dog bite investigations, perhaps rabies reporting, other types of disease among animals. However, we handle about 15 calls for service a day, on any given day. So out of that 15, only 1.5 is mandatory. So some of those type of discretionary things that we do may have to be reduced at the supervisory level.
And if I understand it correctly, the animal control supervisor, that's a civilian position, right?
That's correct.
So we would be shifting responsibilities that are currently assumed by a civilian to a sworn?
That is correct. That sworn position is currently in an administrative function at the police department, so it wouldn't impact field strength from a patrol level at all.
But that person presumably already is working full-time.
That's correct.
Okay.
Candy Bales? Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Madam Mayor, our last category today is funding options. And really, the question is what one-time and ongoing funds are available to the City Council to mitigate layoffs and restore services? And there is a list in your packet of specific items. They total about $2.2 million. Dungeon, did you want to?
Yeah. And the only thing I'll say, I think we've gone over just about all of these already, so I don't think we need to go over them again. They are in the priority that I would recommend to you. So if you were going to say that you wanted to use a certain amount of money, I guess I would draw a line, at least in terms of our recommendation to you. And I'll just give you a little bit of our thought process on this. In terms of the first two, we felt those were doable. In fact, number B, I think is, we feel good about that one. On the general fund contribution to vehicle replacement, we think we can do that for one year. That it's clearly one time. I think you don't want to go there beyond that. On the Measure G funds for one year, I think, as you saw, when we really looked at this carefully, most of the projects that we designated, we weren't going to spend the money anyway. We weren't going to do the Galita project. A couple of the others were delayed. So at least, and that may be at some point where you want to look at some of those carefully. On the delay of the specified capital projects for one year, even if you choose not to use any of that funding, I think Councilmember Horton's suggestion of holding back on those projects may be a good idea anyway, just because it gives you some cushion. I start to get uncomfortable on the last two, on the shift of the DO, maintenance to downtown parking. I think, you know, we're starting to stress there. I do, though. I do, though, believe that one of the options, if you choose to do that, is we could allocate some RDA capital. It's perfectly legal. We've been spending RDA capital for parking. You could, you could put a million dollars of capital in the parking fund and, you know, for the future, and I think you could cover their, kind of, some of those capital concerns. But, it is a, if it's an ongoing shift, you just need to be aware of that, and at some point, it affects when you will have to raise parking rates. That's the bottom line there. Lastly, on the use of the general fund appropriated reserve, and I think the number, actually, I saw yesterday, is a little more than 300.
I think it's 337.
337. Our recommendation is you hold that in the bank because of the police issue and our request for stimulus funding and that, you know, I think our biggest concern is, as I already mentioned, the one-time issue, but more importantly, there's still a lot of one-time money already in the budget, and we still have to make the organization smaller or come up with some new revenue sources in the next year. We're going to be right back here next year talking with you. So, that's kind of, I think, kind of the options. I think next week, you can have a very healthy discussion on these, and we'll try and focus primarily on the policy issues rather than the weed issues.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody? Mr. Williams, go ahead.
I just, you know, with the vehicle replacement fund, to me, having it even be less if it was ongoing would be more responsible because we would be handling some elements of the structural deficit. And have you guys done the sort of basic analysis of, could we do 150 ongoing or 200 ongoing as opposed to 300 one-time? I mean, that, you know, you taught us that that's the way to hit the structural deficit, is to be looking at these in terms of ongoing, so I'm trying to.
As Bob mentioned, when we talked about the replacement program, the problem we have with the replacement program is when we first started it up, we didn't fund it completely. And our strategy all along has been, even though a vehicle may be scheduled for replacement at 10 years, we would push it out. And that over time, over probably a five-to-10-year period, we would be fully funded, and then we could get to the normal replacement schedule. In fact, the opposites happened. We've been pushing out the replacement schedules, and I think if you look at that schedule we gave you, and I know there's a perception, oh, you're replacing vehicles sooner than, in many cases, what happens is we move the vehicles around.
Right.
You know, you've mentioned to me the blue sedan that was down here. It disappeared, and a hybrid appeared. Well, it wasn't sold. It was just transferred in another part of the organization. And I, Gary Harwell, our maintenance fleet supervisor, we have ongoing discussions where I pound on him, you know, move vehicles around so they get used effectively. And I, my personal opinion is, in reality, the number probably should be higher over time, and I, we haven't done a full analysis, but if you look at how we've already pushed the replacement schedule out, and then know that we're not even following that replacement schedule, I don't think you want to look for that for ongoing savings. I really just don't think they're there.
Okay. And there wouldn't even be a number that you guys would recommend if it was ongoing for three years? Obviously, it could at least be 100,000 if it was ongoing for three years, because it'd be the same amount of money. But, tell me if it was ongoing for at least three years, what?
Well, clearly, you can spread that 300 over three years, and it'd be, the net effect would be the same.
All right. Well, you know, just so that we start getting some of these things done, I would just ask that maybe we could make direction to staff on the first three of these items, because they're less controversial? No? Not today? All right.
Well, that was quick. Good. Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. This is a tremendous booklet and a lot of work put into it, so thank you very much. It's going to help me quite a bit in the next week. Looking at the funding options, that page, is the only ongoing item, the zoo contract? Am I looking at everything else as a one-time gig unless we make some policy change? But, the way it's described here, it looks like it's all one-time money.
Possibly the changes to the employee development program if we, because most of that is the, would be the elimination of the tuition reimbursement.
Okay. And if some future year, the economy gets better, we want to add that as a benefit, we could.
And possibly the shift of the DO contract, if you chose to do that.
That's a policy decision-making.
Policy, yeah.
But, everything else here is a one-time. Okay.
You could, you could look at the appropriated reserve either way. If the general fund was balanced and you had that, it could be considered ongoing, although I consider it one-time at this point.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I was, this is very helpful. This is the first time I've seen this kind of detail, and it really helps a lot, because we're going to be poring over these books, and it helps a lot. So, thank you. And our finance committee meeting at 12:30, and then we're back in here at 2 o'clock. Thank you very much. Take this one with me. And then we're here forever tonight. Oh, well.